Okay, you guys are live.
Right. Welcome to the regular meeting of the New Britain Borough Council, Tuesday, January 11th, 2022. Laurie, since I see that you have a flag in hand, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God.
One nation.
Indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Indivisible, liberty, justice. Thank you. Amanda, would you call the roll?
Sure. Steve, I'm just doing it how I see it on screen. So Steve Asher?
Here.
James Donovan?
Here.
Peter LaMontagne?
Here.
Lauren Frasco?
Here.
John Wolf?
Here.
Lori Kesselman?
Here.
And Robin Calhoun.
Here.
Okay. Residents wishing to participate in this meeting, you need to email the Borough Manager at amandazimmermannewbritainborough.com to have your comment read to the public. We're doing this to avoid having people coming in with totally irrelevant discussions of baseball and what we could do with other things. So, call to order, consent agenda, consideration of consent agenda items, December 14th, 2021 minutes, January 3rd, 2022 minutes, bills list for December 2021, consideration of appointment of policy white to the Nature Preserve Committee for a term ending in 2025, consider appointing Edith Benjowski to the zoning hearing board for a term ending in 2024, and approval of resolution 2022-05, appointment resolution. Okay, yeah. Amanda, could you give us a sketch of anything of, I guess there's nothing of great important in any of this?
No, they're just leftover appointments that we missed on reorg. And then as far as the zoning hearing board goes, you need to do per the municipality's planning code, which was news to me today. Thank you, Mike. You have to pass an appointment, you have to do the appointment by resolution, which is why you have resolution 22, 2022-05 as part of the consent agenda.
Okay.
And I have a question, if I may. I believe Edith Benjowski is new to the zoning hearing board, is that correct?
Yes, she was sent to me by John.
Okay, I haven't seen her resume or anything like that. As we go through it, appropriate time, can someone discuss her credentials, please?
John, do you wanna?
Sure. Sure, Edith is my neighbor. She's been in the borough for 25 years. She, her credentials is, she's got a four-year degree in commercial advertisements. She has worked for Vanguard for 20-some years in her commercial marketing end of things. And I just felt that she would be, one, a female, not that I'm, you know, trying to be sexist or anything like that, but, you know, we've had several males on the board and it's nice to have a female to sort of balance that out and their thoughts. She is very creative and has a really great outlook on, you know, development and things down that line. So I thought she'd be a great fit for this board.
I've known Edith many years. I think she's a person of good substance and quality. I just don't know that her, her background kind of, what does she know about zoning? Has she, is she gonna be taking any courses or? I mean, I know when I joined Planning Commission, I took all kinds of courses to learn about planning and zoning and all that. I just was wondering if she had any interest in that.
Yeah, Psex and some of these others, Del Val every now and then does have stuff like that, and she is interested in it. She, you know, being that I've been in zoning for the 20-some years here, she's been plugged into some of that to understand what goes on, what the mindsets are. So she has a little bit of knowledge behind it. But she is definitely open to learning more about it.
How many people are on that committee?
This will make number four. So we're a little bit light as far as numbers on the zoning hearing board. And I know we've had some issues getting more than one person to show up to a hearing.
Reason I ask that, reason I ask that, if it's a large committee, then one person who's kind of learning as she goes would be okay, but if it's a very small committee, that could be.
Yeah, she'll be, she's, most people, the first time they're on zoning, they've never been on it before at all. They've got Andrea Antel has been on there for a while, I believe. Tony Koya has been on there for quite a while. And Bill Schaefer is the other one on there. So adding another person, she'll have plenty of time to learn from them. You have a fantastic zoning hearing board solicitor that can help guide her as well with any questions, but a lot of people that end up on zoning and planning initially have no, they're interested in helping their community, but they don't really have a background in it until they start on those committees.
Okay.
And if we have a vacancy and we have somebody that's interested, I say we say yes.
Yes, you still have, you still have another vacancy on this committee as well.
Yeah, I agree with you, Amanda. I do think she can learn on the job. I learned, you know, on the job with Planning Commission, so, yeah.
And I'm happy to spend any amount of time with her as well.
I learned a lot with the CBC when I became chair before, so, yeah, it can be.
Okay.
Okay.
And just a comment, if I may. A previous practice, it may have been before your arrival, Amanda, but frequently when we've had committee or commission opening, in the packet, we received a redacted copy of the person's application.
Yeah, she did not send it over in time. I did ask her for it, but we just did not. She sent me an email that she was interested, but I just did not receive the paperwork back from the meeting.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion or comments?
Well, I would just say, Amanda, when you get that, will you forward it to us? Because I always find those interesting, even just for when I run into people. I have a little bit of knowledge of who the heck they are.
Sure, not a problem.
Okay. Any further discussion? If not, can I hear a proposal we?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Approve the consent agenda items, seconded by John Wolf, who rescued me on this. So all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, it passed unanimously. The next item is residents' remarks. Do we have any residents on the line?
As of right now, I have not received any resident comments from anyone today at all.
All right. The next item then would be review of written staff reports and elected official reports, the manager's report, and the police department report.
So you have my written report. The gas station had started construction last week. Their ENS controls are out, so they're finally moving forward. We're putting out the bid for the sidewalk project over the next couple of days, so that'll get picked up and hopefully get some good bids in and get that done as quickly as possible by the grant deadline. We're working on just updating stuff during the beginning of the year. The 2021 audit has begun. So I met with the auditor twice already, so we're working on getting him everything that he's requested. So that's in process as well. And the police department have no announcements or anything like that. They're trying to ease us into 2022, apparently.
You have, you have one thing, good thing to report that our collective keysters will appreciate. Would you want to mention that at this time? The new chairs?
Oh. We were able to acquire new chairs for the meeting room from Doylestown Borough. So when we return in February, you will not have to sit on hardwood and chairs anymore.
There we go.
So they're comfy chairs?
They are. I sat in them on our, on our meeting last week, and I even emailed John Davis, and I was like, this is so much better, thank you.
Now, there was something nice and classic about some of those chairs. What are we doing with them?
Right now, everything's just hanging out. We have to find, make a decision on what to do with them.
Okay.
Amanda, just one quickie question on the report, just to try and get used to what I'm looking at and stuff.
Of course.
Was there anything, I'll use the word unusual, different, in the check details, things like that, in the reports that I saw that would be out of the ordinary?
There was nothing abnormal for this round of checks or anything like that. It's just some end of the year cleanup stuff and the normal rounds of bills that we get every single month. So you'll see a lot of like the repetitive bills as you see everything each month.
And that's kind of what I was just hoping to begin to recognize, so I wouldn't have to ask that question.
Yeah, basically, you'll basically notice pretty quick that, you know, Shell on Borough occasionally, Doylestown Borough gets to Berry Isid, Coleman Landscaping, Waring's Hardware, you get a lot of stuff from them. Armor &amp; Sons, who handles all of our traffic signal lights and everything with that, so you'll see those occasionally. Eastburn and Gray and Gilmore and Associates. You'll see. We give the Bucks County Conservation District on there this time because we did have to get our permit for our sidewalk project. So that's just paying for that.
Good.
But other than that, there's really, those, you pretty much are gonna see the same vendors month after month.
Good, thank you.
All right. Let's see, are there any elected officials' reports? I don't think we've, this seems to be new to me, but this particular item.
So Amanda, what are you thinking will be, Amanda, what do you think will be in these elected official reports?
That's just something was on your report, on your agenda, so it's really whatever you want to make it or we take it off, it's up to you. That's just a holdover that has been on a lot of your agendas today.
Okay. I think it's a good idea to leave it in. It gives a time for any elected official that has some issue they'd like to bring up a chance to do it. We may not be able to, I don't know whether, well, we can deal with it.
I think oftentimes we, well, I guess we could leave it in there, but oftentimes we let Amanda know if there's something that we want to speak about, but I guess we could leave it in there. And I do want to share my results on the AAC, but I think there's a spot for that later.
Yes, there is. So hang tight until later.
Okay.
All right, item five, committee activity review, questions and announcements.
Just one thing under that, last week, Amanda sent us all an invitation to the Bucks County Borough's annual meeting coming from Jim Hull, who's the chair. He just called me tonight. That meeting has been canceled. Instead of January 20th, it's now going to be March 24th. Okay, so if anybody's interested in that, you can follow the same instructions that are on that email that Amanda sent.
Yeah. For the new members, having been to a number of the, these meetings, the benefit is really you get to sit down with other municipal volunteers, council people from Central Bucks, Greater Bucks, and we all have the same problems. So it's kind of nice to talk to others along these lines.
And due to the pandemic, I was named treasurer of it, but due to the pandemic, I've yet to go to any in-person meeting because they've all been canceled. But I agree with Peter, I was told by Samantha, when she asked me to become treasurer, that that would be one of the advantages, that I'd be able to meet people from other boroughs, townships, whatever. So I'll let people know when I start attending those in-person meetings. We'll get a, we'll get an official email about the reschedule and time and location and everything? I think so. Jim had just made the decision tonight. I'll follow up with him to make sure that we get the revised invitation.
In the past, I think we've gotten emails as well as paper.
This is all emailed this time. I, they have not been sending any paper out. She's just been sending everything directly to the managers involved. So I forwarded all of that to everybody.
Okay. I'll just make sure, Amanda, that Jim is gonna send out a revised email to you than to send to all of us. Sure.
Okay. Item six, business items. Consider the acceptance of Eric Mandersloos's resignation from council. And consider advisement for a process for council vacancy. So do we, Michael, do we first accept Michael's, Eric's resignation?
Yeah, yes, yes. The first thing you should do is accept Eric's resignation by motion of council and then a vote.
All right. Can I have a motion to accept Eric's resignation?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Hearing none. Would you vote to, could I have a motion to accept Eric's resignation?
We just did that.
Yeah.
So we now vote on approving his resignation. Thank you. All those in favor of accepting Eric's resignation signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, the measure passes.
Mike, just as a point of interest, what happens if by some strange reason, we as a council decided not to accept his resignation? What happens then?
Yeah, I mean, he, I guess technically could go to the court and ask them to force you to accept his resignation because you can't force him to remain in office, but luckily that's never happened, Steve, to my knowledge.
But I wouldn't think so, but I was just curious.
I think technically, I think technically he could say aye and just never show up. But by him resigning, he's allowing us to open the position.
Right, okay. That makes sense, Laurie, thank you.
Okay. The next part of this is consider advertisement and process for council vacancies.
So this kind of goes together with beef with the Appointment Advisory Committee. So historically, or for the last time, I guess, there was, when Lori had resigned earlier last year, you had gone through, you advertised. It looks like your AAC sometimes has a role in the process. So we'll, obviously we'll advertise the position, but it's more, do you want the, those candidates that are selected that submit for applications, you want them to go to the AAC? How do you want to handle this? They can come directly to you and you can do their interview slash intros before you vote on somebody next month. It's kind of, how do you want to do the public process side of it?
So if you wouldn't mind, I did compile some survey results, I think all of you know, because I've bugged you at some point this week, to compile some results from the AAC committee as well as Borough Council to kind of get their information, what their feedback, so that we can have this conversation. And I just want to share the results with you. Amanda, are you able to share it?
Yeah, I'm trying right now and hope for the best here.
Okay.
We got it.
All right, so that's good. All right, so go to the first slide. Okay, so I sent out a survey. Most of you got a chance to participate. I guess Mike and Amanda did not, but.
And I did not.
Oh, and Robin did not.
When was that sent out, Laurie?
It wasn't, I sent it yesterday and then I resent it a couple times. I know I was pestering, but, and then I tried texting. So Robin can tell us what she, her thoughts are, maybe after I share these.
Yeah, just to note, the timing was short, possibly, to get my input due to business obligations.
Oh, yeah, no problem, no problem. So, but we did get a good turnout. So for the Appointment Advisory Committee, eight members responded. And for the council and Jim, everybody but Robin was able to respond. So the data will reflect that. And I really only asked four questions. And let's just kind of, oopsie, can you, yes, when hiring a borough manager, so the, the group was asked to choose one of these options. When hiring a borough manager, the AAC should screen and advise the council with the understanding that council does not need to take the advice, the AAC is not necessary for this purpose, council should screen and make decisions. The AAC should advise and screen on as needed basis as determined by request of council. So those were actually the same things, same three choices for all of the questions. And so in this particular one, when hiring a borough manager, the AAC said 75% thought the AAC should screen and advise. 25% thought that they should advise on as needed basis. In council, in this particular situation, 33% thought that the AAC should screen and advise. 50% that the AAC should on an as needed basis. And 16% said it was not necessary. In this, each of these cases are a little different. The data here suggests, in my opinion, that the majority of the AAC and a good percentage of council sees the value of the AAC playing a large role in the screening and interviewing of new borough managers. 25% and 50% of the Borough Council thinks this should be as needed, directed by council. This seems to suggest that the AAC's role in hiring of staff is very important and helpful to council. It also suggests that the committee sees its value and appreciates the opportunity to contribute to the process. So I, I think, to be honest, I think the data is pretty clear on this, that this is definitely a situation where the AAC should be involved in the screening.
And Laurie?
Yeah.
The statistician in me would like to point out that certainly something, and I think you're doing this already, we're looking to see if there's any huge differences between AAC and council. And also keeping in mind that we're talking about a small denominator, so I'm assuming the denominator, let's say for council, is six. So 50% means three. If a three became a two, then the 50% goes down to 33%. So there's a lot of variance with a small denominator, so I just point, I just point that out.
Yeah, no, it's, it's, it's good. And by the way, Steve, I absolutely knew that you were gonna say something.
Well, when I was on the AAC and we were interviewing manager at the time, you know, candidates, I, I thought it was very effective. And, you know, Amanda, you went through it. And I thought that we came up with three good options. And actually, I thought we had two good options. But in any case, I think that for certain roles like this, I think the AAC takes a lot of the weight off of council, you know, to have to go through those, all those, I mean, I've hired a lot of people and it's not fun going through all those resumes and and, and really narrowing it down. So I definitely see the the, the need for the AAC there.
I, I mean, and looking at that, these two charts in particular, I mean, it's kind of overwhelming that that almost everybody agreed that the AAC's importance, there was maybe some discrepancy over whether or not it should just automatically be, you know, forced, or council should say, yes, we want to go to AAC. But in both cases, the AAC is very, seems to be very important to this process.
Yeah, I agree with it.
And Lauren, as you know, my bottom line with this is, I think it's good that the AAC has a voice, so there's not a feeling that all this hiring and appointments is being done behind closed doors by council.
Well, that's very true.
The way that I view it is almost like when a new drug is approved, a lot of times, the FDA has what's called an advisory committee, and they look at the data. There's like 10 or 12 scientists on the panel. I used to watch those when Johnson &amp; Johnson was in front of the panel. So they would have a panel, an advisory commission, look at all the data, ask a zillion questions, and then they would make a recommendation to the FDA. Recommend like sort of 10 to 2 to approve. The FDA, very interested in that because these experts bring up things that you might not have thought of, but the FDA is the ultimate decision maker and can say, thank you, advisory committee, but we don't agree with your voting. But the bottom line is, it was good to have more feedback, good to have more experts. That's how I view the AAC here.
Yeah, I agree.
So further in this presentation, you'll get to actually see some of the comments that people shared, and I think that'll be helpful as well. I didn't put names with the comments because I did promise that I wouldn't in the survey. But you will get to see what, what they had to say as well.
And Laurie, thank you for doing this so quickly. It's really, it helps to see the results in this pie chart format.
Well, you know, to me, when I was aware of the fact that we were talking about it, I need to be able to see numbers in a way like this. So that's my way. All right.
Thank you.
So next slide, Amanda. Okay, so when there is a Borough Council vacancy, and this is actually one we're gonna be confronted with more quickly than the others. So looking at this chart, I really like seeing these two, the two pies next to each other. So the members polled, 75% thought that they should screen and advise. 25% thought that the AAC should advise on an as needed basis. For council, 33% thought that the AAC should screen and advise. 50% that they should advise on as needed basis, and 16% thought that it wasn't necessary and that the council should do this. My conclusion on this one is that the majority of the AAC and a good percentage of council sees value in the AAC playing a large role. Oh, shoot, my battery is running low. Playing a large role in the screening and interviewing of new members. 25% of the AAC and 50% of Borough Council thinks that this should be on an as needed basis. This seems to suggest that the AAC's role in the hiring of staff is very important and helpful to council. It also suggests that the committee sees its value and appreciates the opportunity. Oopsie, I'm on the wrong one.
You are.
Uh, I'm sorry, my, my, my battery just, can I just plug in? I'm sorry. How embarrassing. Somehow I got unplugged, okay. Unplugged back in, all right. So all right, so anyway, looking at, looking at these two charts, I think it's apparent to me that the Appointment Advisory Committee, well, the Borough Council seems to think that it's not, 50% seems to think that it's not necessary. 50% of the AAC seems to think that it should advise and screen, although 30% of council thinks that it should advise and screen, and 50%, 16% says that it should screen. So I think looking at these two charts, I think that, I mean, my recommendation based on these would be that we stick with the AAC advising on an as needed basis as, as directed by council, which would, would probably be. advising on an as needed basis as directed by council which would would probably be sometimes there would be a need and sometimes there would not but that seems to be what stood out to me and I'll let you guys all kind of digest that information for yourselves
Lori I'm not sure how does one define as needed basis all my cards on the table I'm a fan of having the AAC involved in all appointments all hirings but
well the thing Steve what it means is that the the council says oh there's an opening we'd like the AAC to to evaluate it sometimes there might be a need sometimes they're not might not be a need in some of the feedback that you'll see from the AAC later I did see and I and I've heard a little bit of this too that sometimes they feel as if their time was wasted and more so with this role and with the committee roles those are the two places that I've heard members of the AAC feel like you know the the committees they're all volunteers the committees all know each other they're able to fill their own positions and so they they felt as if their time was wasted not everybody but I think that's actually what made me investigate this a little bit is hearing a few people say that so
on the other hand it's understood that being a member of AAC it's an advisory role it's not necessary that council we as council have to follow the recommendations
well right I agree but the thing is council can always if we if you go with this option I think it's the best of both worlds council can always ask for the help when they need it and if if it was only one person or two people that apply and council knows them what's the point of making the Appointment Advisory Team go through it but if it ends up being a whole bunch of people and it's going to be a complicated task then really maybe it is important so that yellow choice advise on a screen and as needed basis it allows council to ask for help when they feel they need it and maybe not other times I mean any council could decide they wanted to do it every time
yeah that's again that's what I feel because on as needed basis it puts us in a position of having to make a decision what do we mean by as needed I would rather err on the side of having AAC involved in all of these things and really and again I don't want to make more work for people but when you come right down to it over the at least the years I've been involved how much of this have we actually done you know I don't
the thing is it depends on the moment because sometimes it can be a lot and sometimes it can not be a lot we have one coming up which I think has started the conversation although at the time of the manager I I had heard from a few people when we started hiring for managers the last time about some frustrations and that actually was my interest in joining the AAC because I didn't understand what they were saying and I'd like to understand so so anyway this is that's with that particular one we have two more to go through
okay
so one real quick comment I mean just from a standpoint of the as needed basis I took the the phrase as needed not so much that there was a question of if it needed to be decided but just strictly an opportunity came up meaning that if if a decision was going to need to be made on one of these appointments that the AAC would be involved so not so much that borough councilor had to sit back and make a decision about whether or not you wanted to bring AAC into it just simply that how often does this come up how often do you need the you know the opinion of the AAC I'm just guessing here that it doesn't happen all that frequently
quite a bit
yeah so it it actually does happen the actually that was the thing is because right now the AAC is in charge of kind of four different roles there is a potential for them to be meeting quite a bit and so I think there is a big distinction between all four of these things have to go directly to Appointment Advisory and the council can decide when they need to go because if they if the council doesn't need them to make the decision what's the point of them making the decision that's that's the difference between that blue and that yellow
so here's a concern if if we would for this situation for instance borough council vacancy if we would be following the yellow AAC would advise and screen on an as needed basis so say we have a vacancy as we we just have tonight we would need to take council action to ask for AAC involvement so that would take a month unless we have a special meeting so and then we might have another month until application's been reviewed so this could stretch things out if it's not automatic that AAC is involved or if they're not involved
that's a good point Robin
yeah what do you say Mike Peters
you would you would just do it at the same time so tonight you're discussing advertising at the exact same time you would say okay we're advertising and you discuss whether or not to send it to the AAC so there'd be no actual delay it would all happen at the same time
and that's that's fine but the kind of the one of the considerations might be what if you if you only get one to three applicants versus if you get four or more applicants so it could be it could be dependent on you know how many applicants you get which way council might want to go on it in terms of having assistance or
she's right she's right so what would happen if tonight we say oh okay you know we don't we don't need it to go to the AAC for this borough council for Eric's position and then tomorrow there's fifteen people that apply for this thing is is Amanda then able to say to us there've been quite a few are we allowed to then change her mind
you could although you're gonna you're to Robin's point you're gonna run out of time then because you you only have a limited window so basically you need to make this appointment for a new council member by your February meeting right so the more the more delay you get the closer to that time period you get the AAC as we've seen and this is nothing against the AAC it's just reality can have trouble meeting and getting a quorum right so you know no you you really couldn't go back on your on your decision once it's actually made so you know the way it's set up now and it being automatic I know what Samantha did was as soon as there was an opening she immediately started coordinating with the AAC right that's that's what she did so it may be that you want to start thinking about distinguishing between something like a borough council seat which has has a statutory time limit so you only have forty-five days to accept a resignation which you did tonight and then thirty days after that to do an appointment so where you have a strict statutory timeline you may want to decide on a course of action now so it sounds like maybe for borough manager and borough council there's a presumed involvement of the AAC I mean you can always you can always provide that council can decide otherwise but maybe it's good to have that that starting presumption
so actually I would we haven't gotten to the next two slides I would actually say that based on on reviewing this I think that there was people leaning towards some involvement of the AAC in both hiring a manager heavier involvement and actually and then also hiring borough staff that there would be some importance in helping maybe with screening you know resumes and stuff like that that the obvious a lot of people commented or some people commented that that decision really needed to be up to the manager but some of the help in the screening this AAC could be used so then I think the nice thing about the yellow option is it allows us some choice like the yellow option allows you us to decide when we need to use something and when we don't need to use something I mean in the particular borough council option we could decide that we want it to go to the AAC if we think there's going to be a lot of people applying we that in the past that has not been the case you know we're talking about one two or three people so but something like a a position that is being hired for you get a lot of applicants
yeah when we were when we were looking at managers we had a lot of applications and I think that they were even pre-selected before they got to us because I think we had at least six people that we interviewed
yeah admin positions you can get a lot of resumes
yeah
distant positions
I mean it is a great committee to help with that and I think that I thought the way that I read the AAC's charts on this I read it that I think they felt really valued in those two situations and so I I mean if they feel valued and we're getting a lot of help from them I think in those two situations we should definitely keep them on that's just my opinion
you know Lori I was concerned but maybe that concern is not there anymore I was concerned that when we look at the AAC feedback that the blue choice meaning they should be involved is much higher than it is and at least for the slide that's right in front of us now that's just you know two people out of eight feel they should be involved in all the be involved in that decision I'm not sure I don't have in my head what those numbers are for the others but again I was concerned that there'd be a huge disagreement in what they felt they should do versus what council feels they should do
it's interesting Steve because I I wanted to send the survey out to council and Peter actually pushed me to also send it out to AAC and I'm really glad I did because I think I think that seeing the two charts next to each other is just really interesting
and Lori that would answer the question if we didn't have AAC feedback the first question I'm gonna ask is the statistician so this is council feedback as compared to what so Peter that was a good suggestion in my opinion
well I have a firm opinion that if you don't give volunteers substantive things to do then you're not going to get substantive volunteers
I agree with that Peter
and I'll be honest at the farmer's market I've heard quite a few members of the AAC complaining about some of the meetings that they felt was waste of their time and the thing is if there's four things and they feel like two of them are wasted their time why have them do it because we really need them for the other two I mean we really need them to help with those the screening of the early applicants
you know for this one I think I was one of the red people on this one I just thought that the borough manager should hire her own staff personally
Lauren I'm with I'm there with you I I think that we should leave it up to the manager hiring her own staff
well and I think
it becomes a personality
right
I agree on that one and I do have to say that there's actually an error on this slide because see where it says the AAC should advise and screen on as needed basis as determined by request from council on the survey I actually just copied this thing from over from the last slide on the survey it said or the manager so this the the manager should be able to say whether or not they needed
right
and that this should be the yellow I think should be and that's what people responded to should be as needed based on what we needed from them or what Amanda or the manager needs she should be able to ask for that as well and then I just want to go back to the committee one because the committee one I think stood out to me that you know that it maybe wasn't as as necessary I guess my if you're looking at all the data and reading the comments it was it would be my recommendation to council that for the committees and the borough council that we do it on as needed basis actually also for the the staff and that we keep the involvement on the manager I mean they need to be involved in that process
and Lori if you go back to the very first slide you put up there where I was talking about the differences in the blues here we have a pretty big difference where the AAC seventy-five percent feels they should be involved whereas council it's only thirty-three percent
right but I think that that one in particular really shows me that they that that group really feels valued
yep
in that they feel like they've done an important thing and I think council also really does
well for the council thirty-three percent represents two out of the six people that responded
yeah but half of them said said it should be on as needed basis so that's that's still agreeing that they need to be involved
alright yeah no that's
it it just means that council could say hey in this particular situation because of whatever we'll need some help with this part it allows just some flexibility I guess
yeah I mean sounds to me like you know as we summarize this it seems to me that I think we're all in agreement that the AAC serves a useful function but perhaps they don't need to be involved in every single appointment or hiring and I agree with I forget who said it that the borough manager should have the final say in his
so now that we have this I I think we we need to talk about it a little bit because and figure out where we're going with this because we have a we have a spot we're gonna have to fill
isn't there one more slide
oh yes yes there are in the comments Amanda
no we didn't talk about committees
right we did three graphs not yeah not the fourth slide
okay so committees well yeah so the majority of the committee members feel that they should well I guess it's almost half and half about half feels that that they should advise council and oh it's more than that so I guess it depends how you look at that information
right
it really does and then for and council's take on it it sees it mostly and as needed as determined by council basis so both of those two see the see the importance of having the AAC involved yeah
does the AAC get involved if there's only more than one person or if if there's only one person that wants to join a committee
well technically now I think they all go to it which
they all go to it
seems kind of silly but if we choose the yellow option we can decide hey there's like a whole bunch of applicants they should be needed for this and if there's only one person what's the purpose
well even Well, even if there's only one person, that person does not necessarily have to be accepted.
Right. But the thing is, why go through AAC and council?
Right.
For one person. It's a waste of the AAC's time.
Right.
Unless, unless the AAC, maybe somebody on the AAC knows that person a lot better than council and you know, there could be things that could be some valuable information.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, along those same lines, you know, and, and I'm not, you know, I'm not wedded to one point of view either way on this, but if it, if it goes to AAC, committee vacancy, if it goes, it's probably best it goes in all situations. That they, even if it's one person, they have a number of days if there's any feedback. So it, it treats all applicants the same way, in other words. You know?
I agree with you. I mean, on this one, Rob, and I, I, I think it's probably for committees in particular, it should maybe either be one way or the other. I mean, and to be honest, as a committee person, I don't actually see any reason for a committee thing to get, that's my own. My own opinion on this one.
I think we're, we're so happy to have somebody volunteer for the committee at this point.
Thank you, Lauren.
Why discourage them?
Why, why say no to any, anybody? And why make it like, we're not going to, neither group is going to say no to somebody who's willing to volunteer to do parks or something.
Yeah, it's different when there's money involved. I hate to say, but these are volun, this, these are volunteers. These are people who have raised their hand and said they're willing to give some time to the borough.
Yep.
I, I, I don't think you should make them jump through hoops.
So do we need to do it through this AAC committee? And are we wasting the AAC committee's time? You know, I want to respect their time and their efforts when it is really needed versus one or two applicants here and there.
I wonder, is it even worth council's time?
Yeah.
It's kind of not.
No, 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 you guys, you, you have to vet committee members because they're an extension of the borough. So you, you do, you do have to vet committee members. Now, now you can certainly have your committees choose someone to present to you. That's totally fine. But, but in the end, you should be vetting committee members because they are standing committees of the, of Borough Council itself.
So can the, can the applicants go to the committee?
Yep, absolutely.
The committee say, we've reviewed the applicants because they're the people that should be deciding anyway.
A hundred, a hundred percent.
And then them suggest to council, we would like council to accept this person.
Yep, absolutely. That's a great idea.
That makes so much more sense.
Yep.
Mike, Mike, do you have any information on how other boroughs or townships do this?
No, nobody, nobody has an appointment advisory committee. I'm, I'm not saying that it's not a good thing, but it just doesn't, it doesn't really exist anywhere else anymore. It's sort of a, it, it's a, again, there's absolutely nothing wrong with it. You guys, you guys have a huge benefit in, in New Britain Borough of just having like a wealth of volunteers. So the fact that you have volunteers to consider other volunteers is absolutely incredible. It really, it really is. So
That's good.
Yeah. So, so now, now, now that being said, what would happen is if there's a borough manager that's up for consideration, council would create a subcommittee of council to consider the borough manager applications. That's how, that's how it would work elsewhere. So you can't really compare it to anywhere else, although that's not, I'm not saying that's a bad thing at all. I think, I think you're actually lucky in that regard.
Okay, thank you.
I guess it, based on this discussion, I would like to make the recommendation that we let committees vet and recommend committee members to council. And that we let council decide on council members. In both of those cases, we're not talking about a lot of people. And that we let the Appointment Advisory Committee be involved as needed in the hiring of a borough manager and a borough staff.
And then I, I hate to make this complicated, but I have three more for you guys. Your, your current, your current resolution separates out the Planning Commission and the Zoning Hearing Board. So both of those are paid positions. I, I mean, it's not
They're not getting paid here, Mike.
What's that?
Yeah, I never got a dime.
They're not getting stipends here, Mike.
Hey. For the 25 years I was on it.
Yeah, sorry, sorry about that, guys.
You owe me four years of back pay.
Yeah, Mike, I should have liked your dog.
Basically, like after taxes, it's like 25 bucks.
Does that mean then, guys, that the, the Planning Commission? It, it, it's a little different. So a, a Planning Commission and Zoning Hearing Board normally wouldn't be receiving applications for, for other applicants. So do you plan on treating those the same or differently?
Can you explain to me, and this is my own ignorance, why they should be different?
Yeah, I can. So everything else we're talking about, the other commissions and committees are, are what are called standing, quote unquote, standing committees of, of Borough Council. So they are entirely within your discretion as Borough Council regarding whether or not they even exist. The Planning Commission and the Zoning Hearing Board are both statutory boards that, that you are required to fill and, and also to some extent required as governing body to make sure that the people that are appointed to those committees are, are sort of what you're, what you're looking for. So either council should just consider those on their own or involve the AAC. I wouldn't, I wouldn't necessarily expect a Planning Commission or a Zoning Hearing Board to consider their own new membership.
Well, we, we just appointed Edith tonight without the AAC's involvement on the zoning hearing board.
Yep, and it was no big deal. So.
So, so can we say if we had it so that the AAC could advise and screen on as needed basis?
Sure.
That way it would fall in the council's, it would fall in the council's domain to do. But God forbid, you got a whole bunch of people, the council could say, we'd like the AAC to get involved.
Perfect. That, that's perfect. And then the last one, a little bit awkward for me, but we still have to do it, the borough solicitor. So normally that does go through the AAC. How would you like that handled here? Do you want that as needed or?
I feel strongly that that's a council decision.
Me too. Well, I do too, but again, I'm, I'm sort of biased. So why don't we treat it the same as borough manager and borough staff? Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Well, your solicitor engineers, all your professionals should really go through the council.
Yep, yep. I, I completely agree.
Do I?
And then what about zoning hearing board solicitors? Is that strictly zoning hearing board decision?
It is, it is, it is zoning hearing board decision. Good question.
So Mike, I guess you have to amend the document to say all that.
Yeah, yeah. So my recommendation would be, would be twofold this evening. Based on where you've landed, I, I think that this evening you could vote separate from this resolution to handle the appointment of a new Borough Council member for Eric Spot outside of the confines of the AAC. And then I will bring you back an amended document. If I, we can't do it on the fly, unfortunately, there's just too much to amend. So you, you'll, you'll consider an amended document at your February meeting. But I got it all. I, I think we're, we're actually, you, you guys, if you read my resolution, you, you were actually sort of thinking along the same lines as I was, which was giving council most of the discretion. So it, it, it won't be too bad. But I do think that this evening you should decide to handle the, the appointment of Borough Council member outside of the AAC.
Okay.
I'd like to come in on something I, I've been chewing on. From what we've seen in the past, what we do here is not, is okay. But I was thinking about the, what's happened to the school board meetings? And suppose you had the same kind of blitzkrieg landing on Borough Council? And it's not inconceivable. And it might be, we, we really need to have the option of sticking something over to the Appointment Advisory for screening simply so that we don't have to go through scads and scads of what I would call rubbish.
Well, aren't we always able to make, like, aren't we always able to say, hey, we need help? We need a committee to, like, I mean,
Yeah, you could.
People are very, very different right now. But I think we're always allowed to ask for help, aren't we?
You are. Yeah. I mean, you, now, now you need, you need a committee to, to assign that to. So what I could do, just, just to wrap, wrap back around here, is I could, I could add a section in here, something to the effect of, in such other matters as shall be requested for advice from Borough Council or something to that effect.
Good. Yep. I, I go, I go with that.
Yep. Okay. No problem.
So I guess I, I need to make a motion. So are we all in agreement that we're going to have Mike reword the resolution that we have in front of us? To include some of those changes?
Sounds good.
I am for that.
Yeah.
And then and then we, I, I need to, or I'll make a motion to, how do, how do I say this?
Yeah, Laurie, I, I would just say, and again, we're, we're being a little over formal, but that, but that's, that's certainly fine. It would be a motion to process the appointment for for a Borough Council seat without the use of the AAC. That's what the motion would be.
Yes, so moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? There are none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Do we have anybody that's shown any interest?
Well, I don't think it's been posted.
It hasn't been posted. I've been waiting for you to formally accept the resignation and give me instructions on the process that you would like to move forward. So tomorrow I will get the advertisement out in the paper and on the website and everywhere else.
And then email blast, can I email blast?
Yeah, I can absolutely email blast it out as well to anybody. And then we'll set, we can do whatever you want. We'll have to discuss like the deadlines for submitting applications and then that process, that those dates stills that we have to decide on, but we can take care of that tomorrow. I'll look at a calendar. I'll come up with a couple of deadlines.
What were some of the, the comments that you were
Oh, okay. So Amanda, can you scroll over to the comments? And I did share this document with all of you as well. So I actually probably sent it to you three times because I tried to send it. For some reason, my borough email's not working. But that, in this one, I'll give you a chance to kind of read it. And my bullets don't, or my making it bold doesn't mean anything. I was just trying to separate every other.
And then if, and then the council one, I think, is also interesting if you guys are ready to move on.
Interesting comments there.
Yeah.
I think a lot of them reflect a lot of what we said tonight.
Yeah.
I agree.
And none of them are out aligned at all.
Oh, valid points.
And then if, when you switch to the council one on the next page, we do have two members of this current council on AAC. So you'll see I did transfer the, those people's numbers to both situations because they apply in both situations. So anyway, you'll see the comments twice.
We can see Steve's right off the bat.
Now, Steve?
Does it say I'm a statistician? I found Steve's comment.
So I really kind of had a lot of fun putting this together. So if you ever need me to do this for other things, I can.
I think it's great.
Yeah, thank you.
All right. So I think we're good with that. You have this information if you need it. I think we can move on, right?
Thank you, Laurie.
All right, the did we actually approve the resolution?
No, I'm going to draft, Mike's going to redraft it and we'll add it on the February agenda.
Yeah.
Okay. Items, the next item then is meeting, quorum, discussion?
Yeah, I'll take that. It's an, it's an initiative that I've been interested in for quite some time. And to cut right to the chase, I have lots of papers here doing some research, but what I'd like to see happen is the definition of a quorum from a mathematical standpoint is pretty easy. It's a majority of people that are members of a committee, pretty easy. The thing that bothers me is that's not the total definition of a quorum. Those people must be physically present at a meeting. And again, it's not consistent. If it's a borough, if it's a township, if it's, it's all over the board. In fact, I found this case from 1992, which apparently went against everything. It was a Babic versus a milk marketing board. It had to do with two members were not present and hence the decisions at that meeting were challenged. It went all the way to the Pennsylvania Supreme Court. They overturned that decision and they allowed the two people who weren't present for their votes to count because the logic being they were at the meeting, they had all the information necessary, nothing was hidden, everything was transparent. What I'd like to see is, at least for boroughs, is that the quorum be amended to what it has been during the pandemic. I think we would all agree that we got business done on committees and at council. And yeah, I'm old fashioned. I would much rather have in-person meetings. You get to see people, talk with people, talk with the public. But I don't see why, let's say somebody's sick. Let's say somebody, on our CBC example, Debbie Byrne would have to travel like a half an hour to and from our meeting. And if the weather was not so great, it didn't seem fair to put her at risk. And why not? Why can't people call into a meeting and have their voices heard? Now, I can go on and on here, but I'm not going to do that. That's essentially what I'm trying to do. And Mike has told me, unfortunately, it's not as simple as I think to get it changed. We can't even get it changed for New Britain Borough. You know, it has to go through a whole process, maybe going to Harrisburg and all this. Again, this is very preliminary, but I have spoken to Mike a little bit about this. I'm willing to take this on if council here supports this resolution. So I'll open it up if anybody has any questions. Mike, if you'd like to add anything to this, please do.
Steve, I think, I think you put it all perfectly. So you, your understanding of the current requirements for boroughs is, is exactly correct. So unlike second-class townships, for example, where this language is not present in the statute, in boroughs, you're required to have a quorum physically present. Now, for this evening, obviously, we're, we're doing this remotely. And, and the reason we've done that is because we had specific concerns regarding COVID issues. We, we, as you know, passed an emergency declaration because of that issue. But if you were considering something statutory this evening, so for example, a zoning amendment, or even if you were doing an appointment to Borough Council this evening to fill Eric Spot, my recommendation would be we need to find a way to have a quorum physically present. So that is the law. Steve's, Steve's absolutely correct. So the first step would be to put together a resolution that, that the first step, um, would be to put together a resolution that that would provide for, um, you, New Britain Borough, um, supporting an amendment to the Borough Code. And then from there, Steve, Steve can take that to PSAB, he can take it to to the Bucks County Boroughs Association. I mean, this is nothing new. Everyone's been trying to think this through. Um, but I appreciate, you know, we're all saying it makes no sense, but there's no, no change has actually occurred. So to the extent Steve wants to to advocate, I I think it's a good idea. So uh, the first thing you can do, if you're inclined, would be at your next meeting, you could adopt a resolution encouraging both PSAB and the state legislature and and the Bucks County Organization, if you want, um, to push for a change to the quorum requirement. And again, sometimes it feels like you're you're batting at air, but if you don't do anything, obviously, there's no change. So.
And I could be tilting at woodmills, but
Maybe, yep.
Maybe worth a try. I'm willing to take it on.
Well, I think it's a great idea.
I think it's a great idea. Uh, as a former chair of a committee, I know how difficult it is to get a quorum.
Yep.
And we went, I think, with the CBC for like three or four months without even being able to approve our minutes.
Until Mike came up with the brilliant idea of, let's reduce the denominator from ten to seven.
That's right. Yeah. So, um, but but yet we had people that would have been willing to be on the phone or on Zoom
Absolutely.
to attend the meeting, but just couldn't be there in person.
Yeah, I think a lot of these were written before we had the technology that you can telecom.
Oh, oh, no, there's no doubt. There, I mean, you, now, I mean, look, look at, look at the conversation we're having here, right? So it it it's no longer the it's no longer people calling in to try to be heard over a speakerphone. It's we've come a long way, so.
You know, I'll admit, I'm spoiled. I came from working twenty-seven years for Johnson and Johnson, where most of our meetings, we had team members from all over the world, literally. And, you know, you can't be physically present for that. It was interesting to even come up with times that work, you know, two in the morning, okay, that's what we're gonna do. So that's one of the reasons I felt that that Pennsylvania was a little behind the times and why can't we do that? But I just wanted to make sure, Mike, that I wasn't, again, being very naive, and oh, why can't we do it, that I wasn't missing any sound logic for why the rule is what it is.
No, and and Steve, if you, if there was true sound logic, we 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 would have seen it, um, right? So when Act fifteen was passed, that for a time period allowed you to meet remotely, there there were no um, major issues. In fact, the feedback we received from the public was in many regards, it was much easier for the public to participate than it was when council members were live. Now, I I think maybe the initial concern was was people showing up to do their jobs. But that's, you know, that that's not an issue. I mean, i- if there's an attendance issue, it it can be addressed separately as dereliction of duty. It's
Right.
No, there's no, there's no, um, anymore, Steve. There's no legitimate basis for it. It is just, it is just, um, an out, an outdated model. That is go, I mean, it's going to change, right? It's not sustainable. Um, it's just a question of how long.
Yeah, and of course, I know.
There you go.
You know, and I know, of course, as the cliche goes, the devil's in the details. But I think those details, we could work out, you know, what kind of technology would be acceptable, da-da-da-da-da.
All right.
Can the individual boroughs, do they have it, so on and so on?
Yep. Sounds good.
Look, we, the the odd thing is that up all along, we haven't been allowed to call in and vote on council issues without being present. Now, and the vote counted and all of that. So we're three-quarters the way there to having a forum. So we have a situation that, uh, you can't form a quorum, but if you had a quorum, then this other person could come, call in and vote.
Yep.
So.
To be honest, what? If we start, if we start this, I think other people will share it with other communities, they'll follow suit. I see this changing. I mean, it needs to be changed.
I could share it with Jim Hull, who's the chair of the Bucks County Boroughs Association.
Sure, yep.
Yeah. And I bet you, if you talk to somebody in Doylestown Borough, they might be willing to work with you.
Yeah, I mean, the way I do, we we can't all constantly complain about how ridiculous it is and then just do nothing, so.
Exactly. I I'm proud of you, Steve. I think it's great that you take this on.
Thanks, Steve.
You want to have Michael drop a resolution? Is that the next step?
Yep, that's the next step, and it's it's very simple. So Steve and I can work on that.
I just wanted to make sure that I have the support of council and the mayor and I'd like to do this and not just go off by myself.
It sounds like you have.
We don't need a formal vote on this.
Nope, not tonight.
We're, we're disagreeing to have Michael drop a resolution.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Are you twisting your head to one side? Do we have resident remarks?
Uh, no, you do not.
Okay, well then, since there's no resident remarks, can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Any second?
I'll do it once.
All right. All in favor, favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.